Okay, I'd like to call the Metro City Council Regular Meeting on April 16th. The order invocation, excuse me, I'm going to do this invocation by Mr. Kirchner.
Heavenly Father, we thank thee for this day. Help us use good judgment for the business at hand and guide us in wisdom with a continuing sense of truth and fairness for the community we represent.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, I'm in the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Julie, call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling.
Mrs. Dowling has an excuse, absence.
Mr. Kirchner.
Here.
Mr. Krieger.
Here.
Mr. Landig.
Here.
Mr. Marne.
Here.
Mr. Blake.
Here.
Mr. Donovan.
Here.
We have the approval of minutes for the work session for April 2nd, 2019.
Move to approve.
Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Landig.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
And the minutes of the regular meeting for April 2nd.
Move to approve.
Second. Julie.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Landig.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Public hearings, we have none. Tabled legislation, we have none. New legislation, ordinance number 19-0-021.
An ordinance to authorize advances of funds and revisions to appropriations and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiac.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mrs. Linkerfeller, please.
Thank you, Mr. Philippiac. Members of council, what you have in front of you is a piece of legislation with a temporary cash advance of funds from the general fund through the Headland Street Rehab for the Bell Meadow project, and that advance returned as revenue received, and also an increase in appropriations for the street fund or the pavement marking, and that's $28,000.
Thank you.
Move to suspend.
Second. Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Landig.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Ordinance number 19-0-021 has passed. Ordinance number 19-0-022.
An ordinance approving the final subdivision plat of 21 residential lots in the Becker's Landing subdivision and declare an emergency.
Mr. Walters.
Mr. President.
State your name and address.
Did you want us to introduce this first, or?
Yeah, Mr. Walters, if you don't mind, look, city manager, go ahead and.
We're not getting it out.
Hey, Dave.
No, I think, well, council has it in front of it. So, thank you, council, and Ms. Mitchell's absence, I'll introduce this to you. As council is aware, this is the Becker's Landing subdivision. This is an R2-zoned area currently, represents 21 sublots, three of those, two of those facing Lake Shore, one at the corner of Lake Shore and Becker, and then 18 facing Becker Avenue, all of which would be on the west side of the roadway. Sublots range in size from 16,300 square feet to 27,151 square feet, all of which meet the 15,000 square foot minimum requirement, and all of which exceed the 80 lot width requirement. As part of this development, they're proposing to extend the roadway to include a 100-foot wide cul-de-sac that would meet all of the city's requirements for capably serving our emergency vehicles and to allow them to turn around. That's a total 140-foot wide right-of-way at that point. There'll be an 8-inch sanitary sewer line that will be constructed within a 10-foot dedicated easement, utility easement, just outside of the right-of-way, again, on the west side of Becker Avenue. They'll also extend an 8-inch water line that's currently located on the east side of Becker that also serves the Marshview development. All utility connections required by the city will be bored, there will be no open cuts allowed as part of the development. Storm detention is provided on Block A and sublots nine and 10 on your drawing there. Wetlands delineation affirmation is required to be submitted to the Army Corps, and the city's looking for that as part of submission with the final plat. Planning Commission did approve the final subdivision plat on September 27th of last year by a vote of six to one with four conditions. Conditions are abiding by the comments provided by the city engineer addressing all final plat submissions, the second being the entire length of Becker Avenue shall be reconstructed or improved to meet current city of mentor roadway design standards per Chapter 111503, and providing detailed drawings of the proposed roadway. The final plat shall include the ownership and maintenance responsibilities of Block A, Block B, and any designated conservation areas, and an updated cover sheet needs to be included to change the name from Ron Trob to Kathy Mitchell as planning director. Couple of notes in addition to that, in December of 2018, the city did receive a letter from, I'm probably going to say this name incorrectly, but Tim Repaglio, indicating that Block B has been removed and that the common conservation areas shall be owned and maintained by the adjoining homeowners. We don't have a lot of detail on those two comments. And I'll also point out the detailed drawings for the improvement of Becker, for the improvement of the existing portion of Becker Avenue have not been submitted. Answer any questions if I can.
Council, you have any questions?
Nope.
No questions from council? Law Director, you want to make a few comments on this?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, members of council, just a few items. Again, as Mr. Philippiac indicated, it's a little bit of confusion over Block B, now that Block B representing the open space, the area that would not be developed at the end of Becker, and then also Block A. I guess what we're hoping for was something a little bit with more teeth to it relative to ongoing ownership and maintenance. And I'll just briefly outline the nature of the problem that we currently face throughout the city with some of these older homeowners associations where they've got common lands. They dissolve. The homeowners associations on a long enough timeline, and this is something that we're routinely dealing with, they're just proved not viable, and the smaller the homeowners association, the less viable they tend to be as well. The problem seems to be that they're not really incentivized to take care of their common lands. They have to assess themselves some money to have, you know, just routine maintenance, and also, as reflected here, there's some ongoing, you know, maintenance with stormwater infrastructure. And the associations just, you know, aren't incentivized to continue to basically, you know, charge themselves to take care of land that the individual owners don't feel that they receive any benefit from. So, we've encountered just about everything that you can imagine. Some of these old open space blocks that were not originally to be developed, falling into tax foreclosure, being purchased, and then, you know, facing legal challenges from that purchaser that since it was an existing lot of record, they had the right to build on it. Now, you can take a look at Block A and realize that while it's conforming an area, its depth would absolutely be a challenge to comply with our both front and rear setback requirements. Now, I can almost guarantee on a long enough timeline that it will become a headache because that's what we're dealing with now. The similar circumstances that were allowed 30 some years ago are now reality relative to legal issues. Likewise with Block B and the stormwater management infrastructure there. So, submitted with the proposal were the draft homeowners association guidelines, and they're all fine on their face. I think what I would recommend and what we would be looking for is a more direct city stake in those documents. What we've been doing moving forward is, at least for purposes of the city's ability to enforce some of these agreements, and they can be all types of different agreements. We've got reciprocal easements that are required as part of an approved development plan. It may be circumstances like this where there's required stormwater management infrastructure on a particular area, where the city, without being an actual party to the agreement nonetheless, has enforcement authority, where if the association somehow dissolves, if they're not taking care of their stormwater management, we're able to go in there and actually enforce it directly. And so, that's something that I would recommend that we would look forward in this instance. A few questions come up as well, and this could be a real, something that we also see fairly frequently if you look at the proposed stormwater management on sublots nine and 10. History is that those, that'll be the first thing that gets filled in. They just, those owners just, you know, 20 years from now, the engineers will be out there wondering why the stormwater is not flowing as appropriately, and we'll see that was filled in and regraded. It's just the pattern that we're seeing, and so what I'd like to do is, again, better address some of those issues. So, a few questions that are still open-ended, I think. Does Block A even need to exist? Might just be consolidated with Sublot 3, and someone will have a large yard, and then obviously Block B, I think, requires some special attention as well. So, those are some of the initial reactions from the legal documents that were presented. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Okay, now, Mr. Walter.
I'm honored to be here. I submitted that I were for this, but there's one caveat to that, and that's stipulation two that is in the Planning Commission's recommendations. We've opposed that from day one. There were two Planning Commission hearings. We opposed condition two, and with a little bit of your patience, I want to run through the arguments that we have for the record. If you recall, the Planning Commission and staff report did a good job of summarizing where this land has been over the past almost 90 years. We represent, my name's Eric L. Walter, I'm at the law firm of Dorkin and Bernstein, Place, Paintville, Ohio, 44077, and we represent Jerome T. Osborne Family Limited Partnership as well as Osborne Escavating, Inc. Need to get this a little closer, sorry. So, Becker Road was dedicated in 1929. It is a publicly dedicated roadway. Currently, it's an asphalt and publicly maintained road by the exempt village of Mentor. The proposal before you is 21 homes, all with driveways coming on to Becker Avenue itself. In 1929, the White Hills allotment subdivision plot was recorded, the recording date was August 28th, 1929. That proposal called for 32 homes to be built. Now, there's kind of, I've driven Becker Avenue, I Google-earths Becker Avenue, I count nine, staff report says 10, there may be a 10th, but of that original subdivision, there were 10 houses built. The Becker Road, or Becker Avenue subdivision is proposing 21. So, the original idea was that 32 homes would be using Becker Avenue. If you do the math, there's 21 homes plus, we'll say, 10, you're still under the original mandate of what was being proposed for Becker Avenue. Today, many of the houses on the White Hill Division are on, many that, much of that land's not developed, cannot be developed at this time, is my understanding. So, that issue is condition two, and it states, "Developers shall improve, reconstruct, or reconstruct the entire length of Becker Avenue to conform with current city of mentor roadway design standards." I've done extensive research, I've done extensive polling of your ordinances. What's cited is the authority in the staff report is ordinance 1111.04 as to final plats, as well as 111302 final plats. If you look in your city code, there's really three sections that I find that apply. It's section 111503, which is construction of roads, 1117.02, which is general, and then there's section 907.01, which is the cleaning of streets. Simply put, I cannot find any authority for mandating the reconstruction of an already existing dedicated road. We did a sunshine request, which many see as a FOIA request, and I want to publicly thank Mr. Seisman and Jessica who put those together. It was quite an enormous project to do these, I call them FOIA requests, Ohio says sunshine laws. I have stacks and stacks and stacks of documents that my clients probably not going to be real happy that they got billed for me to review, but I found nothing that ever required the complete reconstruction of a road that is existing. The idea is, with roads, the city can maintain a new subdivision with roads that are being put in to service those homes. You don't have that here. You have a proposal that is going to have driveways going on to an existing publicly dedicated roadway. And again, I just, I want to thank Mr. Seisman and Jessica Foss for helping with the FOIA request. They were timely, quite frankly, timely, more timely than the state of Ohio with requests. So, you really have some knockout people in that regard. There are a few things I want to note. If you look at Ohio Revised Code 711.09, that section states that in order to be able to have types of controls, it has to be legislated into an ordinance. I don't see any ordinance, and if I'm wrong, you can correct me, in the city of, or the village of Mentor, that says you can make a developer reconstruct an already existing public road. Our opinion is that requiring an existing publicly dedicated road to be reconstructed was never submitted under ORC 71109, nor can it be enforced. Further, I would like to point out the holding in a case called RG Dunbar Incorporated versus Toledo Planning Commission, and I can supply these to City Council, which I believe he has them already, but it's 520 Ohio Appeals 2D 451976. And I want to quote a section of that that says, "If a subdivision regulation of a municipality is within the statutory grant of power to the municipality and within the framework of the United States and Ohio constitutions, and if the burden cast upon the subdivider is specifically and uniquely attributable to his activity, then regulation is permissible. But if it is not due to those two aspects, it cannot be imposed." And our argument is, the burden cast upon the developer in this project is not specifically and uniquely designed toward what is being proposed. It was already proposed in 1929. With that said, the Dunbar case went on to say, "They caution that because requirement that a plat or subdivision be approved affords the appropriate point of control with respects to costs made necessary by the subdivision, it does not follow that communities must use this point of control to solve all the problems which they can foresee." This is a unique situation. This is a situation where it's not a private road, and there's arguments that it still wouldn't apply there. This is a publicly dedicated road, and to force a developer that to reconstruct a section of road or even do anything to it, other than if, it's my understanding that there was a work done on one of the other subdivisions, there was damage done to the road, it was not my, our client, but the city required them to fix the road, and actually, that was Becker Avenue, and it was repaired by that developer in that subdivision. We're not claiming that if we damaged Becker Avenue, that we wouldn't take care of it. However, the way that this has been outlined in the plans, we're going to use the undeveloped land to traverse with construction equipment. There is no desire to use Becker Avenue to do that, and there's no desire to harm Becker Road. Again, approving a plat should not be conditioned upon our client having to reconstruct the entire road. Further, street requirement is not related to our activity, it, again, is within the original purview of 32 homes on Becker Road, and we're still under that with our proposal and what's already existing there. Finally, I'd like to point out another case, McCain versus Toledo City Planning Commission is 26 Ohio App 2D 1971, which was actually cited in a case against the city of Mentor by another building issue that really wasn't about a road, it was more about drainage. But in that, it says, "The activity within the subdivision must be specifically and uniquely," again, "designated toward the use being proposed." The argument is, this is not specifically and uniquely the problem of this development. It is something that they are currently in, outside the purview of what can be required of the developer. With this noted, it's clear that the total reconstruction is not necessary. On September 6th, 2018, the staff report actually said that the existing road is in fair condition. There have been core samples taken, and on March 11th, 2019, an email was received by our office that basically states, "The core samples were analyzed, and in my opinion, total reconstruction is not necessary." We would ask that city council take action. We want to go forward with this, but we do not want to have any requirements to reconstruct or to do anything to Becker Road. That is why we've opposed condition two every turn of this step. If city council is willing to pass it without that condition, this will go forward. Alternatively, which is not our, you know, desire, but if the city council wants to get rid of the reconstruction aspect and alternatively bring it to standards that would be acceptable to the city, which perhaps is putting asphalt on it, we're against that, but I would like city council to take some action tonight that either eradicates that condition or, again, will be against it, but limits it as opposed to current standards to what is acceptable to the city at this time. With that, I do thank you for your time. It is a, it's an issue that has never been brought up, to my knowledge, in my 23 years of practice. I've never waded through so many documents in my life, and again, I thank city for working with us on getting those. It was a monumental task, but there was nothing in there that supports that this has ever been done. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Philippiac, any comments on this?
I'd only to point, only to perhaps point out the obvious, that city standards have changed in 90 years, and of course, what the applicant is referring to, a plat that was done in 1929 when this, when it was a township, the city didn't exist then, so.
But we're still missing some documents for the filing, is that correct?
Well, what we would be missing would be the engineered, the engineering, the standards and design that would comply with that requirement that's in the Planning Commission's stipulation regarding the road upgrade.
Okay, all right. Mr. Seeman.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, members of council. Again, on the legal side of things, I am still concerned about the long-term maintenance of Block A and Block B, as well as the stormwater management infrastructure. That's just a question of draftsmanship. I think we've been fairly, I've been fairly consistent in getting language in some of these agreements that'll help with our enforcement down the road. In terms of Becker itself, it's, it really is a unique animal, as Mr. Philippiac indicated, and yeah, it was platted back in 1929. Anyone that's familiar with it, it's basically a long driveway for a couple houses that are at the end of Becker, and then the additional, about five or six houses, I don't know the exact count, are much closer to Lake Shore, and that's all it functions for currently. And so, what we're looking at in terms of a legal analysis in this very unique situation is sort of but-for causation. But for putting 18 subdivisions on Beck, sublots on Becker, would the city be improving Becker? Would there be any need to, public need to? And the answer to that is no. Again, it tends to function as a very, very long driveway. It's extremely rustic and probably perfectly suitable for the limited number of trips that only four or five residences generate. But we're talking about, again, an impact of this development. Part of the development, again, goes to the center line of Becker, so it is included in the current right-of-way. We're talking about additional 18 houses, and, you know, traffic patterns now are not what they were back in 1929, and our code is that when you've got a new subdivision, you comply with current regulations. And so, I think engineering has a lot of history with Becker and just how easy it is that it can get, be torn up by any heavy equipment or vehicles going down there, and it just doesn't take that much traffic currently. So, we're taking a look at 18 houses on Becker now, and if we look at the 10th, the most recent edition of the ITE manual, you know, we're looking at, you know, we're upwards of 171 trips per day now on Becker compared to what only four houses generates. And it's not just light passenger vehicles, of course, you know, delivery vehicles now are a very frequent component in residential neighborhoods.
Garbage.
Garbage collection and everything else. So, I think the concern from the administration's part and the reason that that condition went in there is with this additional sublots and its development, Becker's going to get torn up very quickly, very soon, and very likely that may result in an assessment for these homeowners there, and how can we, I think the administration, I'm not going to speak for entirely, but I think the focus was, what can be done to Becker today to better position it for a long-term, you know, viability without having to completely reconstruct it? And so, I don't know that necessarily, based on some of what the comments were, that a complete reconstruction is necessarily in the cards, but certainly some improvements to Becker to make sure that it functions and can handle that increased traffic capacity is probably going to be necessary. And if the developer doesn't want to do it, if that's ultimately council's decision, odds are, I think, and certainly correct me if I'm wrong, relative to the engineering, it's probably a situation where, you know, council may be confronted with an assessment to make some improvements to Becker in the near future. So, that's really the divide that currently exists between what the city's looking for and what the developer is, its focus on there. So, no common ground has been found to date, but, you know, certainly something that should be, continue to work on.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Philippiac, yes.
Yeah, just to expand on that a little bit, I think it would probably help council to know that we, you know, recognizing the uniqueness of this, again, it is our desire to elevate that to a standard that will provide adequate serviceability to the 18 new residents that would, that would make their home on Becker. As the law director pointed out, it's going to generate a significant amount of traffic, and the type of traffic that we see today is heavier vehicles than that were around 90 years ago. So, we have attempted to reach out and provide a compromise with the developer. We met in early November with Mr. Walter and Mr. Dave Knobek representing the developer, and offered to share the cost, to bring that up, to moderately raise the standard of that roadway that would provide a significantly lower cost to the developer and satisfy what our concerns are in providing adequate serviceability to that roadway. They have rejected that, but I don't, I don't know, and perhaps Mr. Walter can address this now because it suggested, I think he may have suggested that there's maybe some inclination to look at a more moderate approach to this. I don't know if you wanted to address that.
Well, I do not have specific instructions tonight to agree. What I was asking city council to do is, if it's the complete reconstruction, there's absolutely no way, and as I stand here tonight, I'm meeting with the executors tomorrow, I'm not saying we would agree to some resolution. I have always said to everyone that we've been involved with that it always makes sense to look at something, but if city council's going to pass this, we ask that there be no refurbishing of Becker Road, but if you're going to pass it with some stipulation that it would not be with a reconstruction, which could cost in excess of a million dollars, and put something lesser on that. Am I saying that they're agreeing to this? No. As I stand before you this evening, I do not have authority for that. And I do want to thank the city for working with us. I'm in a situation right now where I was told we're not paying anything. In my 23 years of litigation, that's where they stand today. As everyone knows, I don't know if that's going to change or not, but my instructions were, no, we don't want to do anything to Becker Road as of today. That's why we're here. So, I can't answer what they're willing to do because I don't know. Tonight's instructions were, we shouldn't have to do anything to Becker Road, and that's what I'm portraying to you this evening, is they don't feel, and this is an interesting scenario. I've done, I practice in three states. I've never seen this. This is something that has been kind of an elephant in the room, and it's never come up until now, and there's really no one answer or the other. When you talked about Block A and Block B, I let Mrs. Mitchell know as to the homeowners association requirements, those are very draft at this point. But I don't know, again, I could talk to my clients tomorrow, I think we're willing to work with you as to those issues. If that's the biggest issue, we're not, I'm not standing here tonight saying we're not going to put some more into the homeowners association regulations. That was a very generic draft set that was sent over to get before you this evening. So, to answer your questions, I think we can work on the restrictions as to what a homeowners association is supposed to do, and as to the cost, tonight, they don't want to do anything to the road. I can't stand here, I'm not a person that believes in nevers. Today, it's never, I don't know. But if you're going to pass this with some stipulation, which is our request that you pass it without stipulation two, we'll go forward. If you pass it with a stipulation, we're not saying we'll agree to it, but lessen it from a complete reconstruction, which could be in excess of a million dollars, to something different. But as I stand here today, I cannot commit. But as I stand here today, I cannot commit to, yes, they will agree to anything. Does that answer your question?
Thank you.
In a roundabout way?
Thank you, Mr. Walter.
Mr. President?
Yes. In planning commission and working with the developers, what type of homes would be built on Becker?
I can't really answer that, Mr. Marne. Again, you know, they, our, our standard would be comply with the Ohio Building Code. I, I don't know if they're planning on building custom-built homes or manufactured homes, if that's, if that's your question.
Right.
I don't think we have an answer.
I mean, I doubt they're going to build half a million dollar houses on 13 sublots that are now part basically of a private drive for the current four residents of Becker.
Can you answer that?
So I guess, what I would like to know is, you know, Marshview has now been completed. I mean, is this going to be something that will be in compliance with what we have next door at Marshview? Because not only are we talking about people that are affected on Becker, whether or not they're assessed, or whether or not that these will be improvements to the properties around them, which will help their property values, we also have the neighborhood of Marshview to worry about whether or not it's going to help their property values. Because they've all laid out the average price that I know of in there is, what, about $300,000 to $400,000, correct?
Correct.
We don't have any design guidelines or specs for what they're trying to do.
No, again, we, we really don't have the ability to compel a particular style or type of house. I mean, you have to comply with the Ohio Building Code. I, it's, it's, I don't believe that there's any specific standards, elevated standards, I would say, that are written into subdivision requirements that the owners would, would sign, the so-called governance. It's my understanding that there aren't anything, anything special written into that.
How currently are the residents of Becker served by sanitary?
Currently, there is no sanitary.
Septic. Septic. So the new homes will be septic?
No. So you're, you're raising an interesting point, and I was asked about this earlier today by another councilman, which caused us to, to do a little research to provide you with an adequate answer on this. The proposal would be for the installation of an eight-inch sanitary sewer line along the west, it would actually be along an easement immediately adjacent to the right-of-way on the west side that would, is intended to serve only the houses on the west side of the roadway.
Okay.
The east side is currently served by septic systems. I actually had a conversation today with Ron Graham, the director of the Health District, who, they set the rules for extension of san, for compliance or the requirement to tie into a sanitary system where one exists. And their, their rules require the following, I won't get into all of them, but the two essential elements that would compel those who are on septic systems to tie into a sanitary closed system would be the requirement that the structures are within 200 feet of the right-of-way, any portion of the right-of-way within which the sanitary, the new sanitary line would, would sit, which of course, all of the homes on the, on the east side of the roadway would comply with that. The second requirement would be that the service has been made available to the house via a T and/or lateral when the house is on same side of road as the sewer, or a T and a lateral when the house is on the opposite side of the road as the sewer. So the idea here being, if laterals are not extended across the street as part of this project, in theory, they would not be required to tie in, the people on the, on the east side, they're septic. I then asked Mr. Graham whether or not, if, if someone's septic failed on the east side, or they, they wanted a permit to reconstruct it, would it be issued? And he said, probably not. They would require them to be, to be tied into the sanitary system that now exists on the west side. So I then asked him what their preference, because, because again, the uniqueness of this subdivision is, is, it's, it's not just the roadway, it's, we're only dealing with one side of the road here. In nearly every other case, in the new subdivision in our community, both sides, there's construction on both sides of the road, so we would require those laterals to be constructed going underneath the road to be able to serve both sides of the street. You know, you put the sewer down one side, which you, which you provide connection points on the opposite side, that is not being proposed in this, in this. So essentially, I asked Mr. Graham what their preference would be, and their preference would definitely be to provide those laterals to the east side, because by not doing it, they would essentially be deferring that cost to the people on, on the east side, which then raises an interesting prospect for them, because within a couple of years, they require to tie in. And there's some definite advantages to that. We have no idea what the condition of those septic systems are. It's not a municipal function for us to review that. But it would certainly be their desire to have them tied in versus remaining on, on those septic systems. I can, I, I feel pretty confident, people that may be impacted by that on the east side have probably not engaged in any discussion related to that, but I'm sure they're very familiar with the idea that west side of that roadway is going to be on a closed sanitary system.
So there's a possibility they could be forced and have to be assessed what it would cost, whether they want to or not?
Well, there's an absolute certainty that when those septic systems fail, they would be required to tie into the existing sanitary line across the street. And then that would, they would then be incurring significant cost to try to do that after the fact. Typically, it's a lot less expensive to do that now when you're actually installing the, the system. And as I pointed out earlier in my comments introducing this, this piece, that the city is requiring boring for all and is disallowing any open cuts. So our concern certainly would be that, you know, someone's tying in down the road, they're, they at that point would require, would ask for an open cut, which we would not want to provide. And so now, cost of boring under a roadway to try to tie in to an existing system is be pretty pricey.
Hopefully, it's not $100,000 like it was 10 years ago, Kurt.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
In the marina.
Almost done.
Oh, come on.
So there's a possibility, still, the people of Becker, if they wanted to keep it as is and they owned all the property with their, call it long driveway as it is now, would want to keep it that way. It's a possibility, right?
You disapprove the subdivision plan. It stays exactly that way, yes.
Then they would have to buy the property in order to keep it the way that they've always had it for the last, you know, 80 years or whatever. So I guess, my question is, is why is this in front of us now, when we have all these unanswered questions? Because normally, by the time it gets up through the administration, gets through planning commission, whoever else it goes through, that, you know, we have exactly where we're at in terms of stipulations, in terms of what we're building, what we're not building, in terms of what the average house size is going to be, you know, things of that nature. So why is this in front of us now?
Well, like, again, I, I think we acknowledge that there's a uniqueness to this project and that, you know, the applicant is making an argument, the primary argument here, and I think the primary concern by the applicant has been stated, it's the, it's the stipulation number two with respect to the road, roadway reconstruction. I, I think from, from the administration's point of view, we're, we're just trying to provide due process here for the applicant. They have, it gets up to council to decide whether or not that stipulation is valid or it gets up to the law director to determine whether or not they have a right to be in front of you asking for you to remove it. I'm real confident he would probably suggest that they do have that, that opportunity.
Now, Mr. Walter stated that he didn't see this any other time. His practicing law was a quarter of a century. What about us? Has there been, Kurt, you might remember, you've been in planning forever, has there been any other times where we had, say, what, there's four homes in Becker, I think, four or five, right? Say, four homes in Becker, so it's 18, so it's, you know, call it, you know, you know, four, five times the amount of homes going in there. Has there been any other time where we platted and allowed new homes to be built but not improve?
Until I can remember.
Because in one sense, to me, it's like, why would I buy a new house on a, on an old road with no sidewalks, no curbs, nowhere to, for kids to ride bikes and anything of that nature? So why would I spend that money? With the selling advantage of, with the buying advantage of it? Why would I want, when I could be next door in Marshview, where, once again, there's no sidewalks in Marshview, as we all know, but, you know, it's, was designed to be a gated community where, you know, people can, you know, be together, you know, have neighborhood parties, have places for kids to play or visit, what have you. So, I mean, there's no other time in our history that we had this come to for us that anyone could remember?
Well, I, you know, I can't speak to the, to your second point in terms of the desirability of, of this versus other areas of the city. It will, by the way, require sidewalk on the west side of Becker. But in terms of upgrades, I mean, I can, can offer you other examples where we have asked for stormwater improvements, tension improvements, you know, to accommodate new, new developments or, or growth to an existing area. I mean, it's, I, at the top of my head, I can't thi, I'm not thinking of any roadway improvements. Maybe the city engineer can, can think of a roadway.
We do require roadway improvements for developments in Marshview. We require a left turn lane be installed on Lakeshore Boulevard to serve the development. We also required roadway improvements for the development on, on Maple Street, which was, I don't, I don't recall the name of the street, whether it was Baker or Merkle.
Baker, it was Baker. That's another example. Required sidewalk installation on, on Baker as, as an example, in reconstruction of the roadway.
Short section, but it was reconstructed.
So, so it's, it isn't really that unusual. I mean, keeping in mind, and I think the law director pointed this out satisfactorily, you know, our, our, our point here is that in 90 years, these city standards have changed. They've changed because so many other conditions have changed, and how we define the standards today in terms of how we define an adequate serviceable roadway are just different than they were 90 years ago. So what we are simply saying is that, you know, we need to bring it up to a serviceable standard now that you're going to put a lot more traffic on that roadway. And you certainly have the right to do that through assessment, anytime you upgrade, whether it's a roadway or, or, or any other type of public infrastructure that provides benefit. It would just seem a little bit, I don't know, roundabout, let's just say, to, to, sell these lots, plat this, sell these lots, and then improve the roadway in order to meet the, what we know is going to be the desirable service standards on that road. It doesn't make any sense, especially since the same people are going to end up paying the cost. And as a matter of fact, I, the, the, in this particular instance, because the city has provided what we think is a generous offer to participate in the upgrades, it would be less than what the residents along that roadway would pay in the event that you upgraded it to the standard that we proposed, that if, if, if it were done as an assessment.
The fine standard that was proposed, you're talking, basically now Becker's like a chip and seal almost type of street.
Yeah, so.
So you're talking about sidewalks, you're talking about curbs, you're talking about...
No, we're talking, and I'm just focused on the roadway here, Mr. Marne, in this particular instance.
Widening it, it's got to be wide and no it's skinny.
We, we would be, we would be willing to accept a roadway that is essentially a little, I'll just put it in layman's terms, a little thicker, okay? To, we've evaluated the base, it's, it's not great, but there's about, well, you know what? I'll let the city engineer address it directly.
Sure. Yeah, we were able to do some pavement cores over the past couple of months. We, we were able to determine the thickness of the, of the pavement. And it was overall, there's about five inches of usable pavement. It looks like possibly that in the past, up to seven inches of asphalt was, was placed probably at three different times. The lowest two inches of the, of the asphalt is, is basically deteriorated into just an aggregate, so of the seven inches, about five inches of, of intact asphalt. So we felt that if we could increase that thickness by about two inches, that we would be pretty comparable to a, a standard pavement. And we, what we were proposing was to remove about a one-inch, a one-inch thickness of the existing surface, to remove the aging asphalt, oxidized surface, and along with a number of repairs that would be made, then we would put back three inches of asphalt. So it's two-inch net increase in thickness. The roadway is narrower than, than we typically would see today. It's about 18 to 19 feet. A new subdivision would be about 24 feet wide. So we felt with the, with the number of, of lots being proposed, that, that we could, we could live with a narrower street if, if the pavement was, was strengthened a bit.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Finally done.
Mr. President? Let me, Mr. Donovan.
Was he first? Go ahead.
I think, you know, there, I'm going to get off the road for a minute, but after your conversation about the sanitary and the laterals and all that, seems like we have another condition that actually might have to be added as far as your conversation with Mr. Graham, if a sanitary sewer goes in. And, and his health advice is, teasing laterals to the east side, it almost sounds like we need to add another condition into here, which would be condition five. And that's just my comment on that. I don't know if we can move forward without that condition in here.
Well, I, I think it's something you need to consider. You know, we, perhaps, you know, we didn't do enough to really look into great detail on that and, you know, and I compliment council for, for raising the issue. Because in the end, the Health District's interest is in tying into sanitary closed loop system. We know that they would not permit additional septics, septic, a new septic field in an area that has an immediately adjacent sanitary system in the future. Now, whether some of those are going to go, stop functioning next week or 10 years from now, that, that information, we don't know. What we do know is that the, the, the lack of laterals crossing that roadway would mean that that cost is now going to be deferred on them, and that it would be substantially greater to do it after the fact than to do it at the point of which you have a contractor mobilized and in a position to do that once you're digging that deeper trench. So, just a thought. I mean, again, it's, it's, it's good, it's an interesting point to raise and it's, it's something that I think both serves the intent of the Health District, and I would say certainly the munis, the cities as well. I mean, we, we would, of course, also want to see properties move away from the septic standard and toward a close, the closed.
My question is, is this time, is this the time to add that as a condition five?
It's, it's, it's certainly the most cost-efficient time to do it.
Mr. Blake?
Mr. President, thank you. Just one more go at this road. And this, you know, in my time, this is really unique. We've got 18 new lots coming in onto Becker, and the roadway that's there seems to be not, not substantial enough to support that. But my question is, is the cul-de-sac that's proposed to go in, actually, it's a half cul-de-sac at the end. Who pays for that if, if Mr. Walter is saying they do not want condition two, they don't really want an upgrade to the road, but still, that cul-de-sac should go in there at the end because you've got those 18 houses, you're going to have more traffic, more trips down there. So is that part of condition two, or?
It is. There's really no dispute with developer on that. That will be 100% at their cost.
They would do that portion.
And as it is, as it's proposed, it, it would meet all of our requirements.
So the developer would take care of that half cul-de-sac, which is part of the roadway? So I'm just trying to distinguish between that portion of the roadway that they would cover as opposed to this part that they don't really want to, and I'm, and I'm sure taking that top inch off the roadway and putting three inches on is going to be a whole lot cheaper than a million dollars to do the whole thing or whatever the cost would be.
It's about $120,000. We have, we have, we have proposed... a sixty forty split where the developer, the city would pay the forty percent. It's about, estimate it's a little over seventy thousand dollars cost to the developer.
And you'd have road, you'd have, you know, that cul-de-sac at the end, and you'd have nice houses going in.
That doesn't include the cost of cul-de-sac. That's just the cost of upgrading the existing Becker.
Well, the cul-de-sac would be on, on the developer.
Exactly, and I don't, we don't have an estimate of that.
I'm just trying to distinguish between that part of the roadway that they will do as part that they don't want to be part of. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I'd like to add a condition five if I can. Is that, is that possible, Joe?
Should, are we going to add conditions? Should we send it back in?
It's, it's, you don't have to send it back to planning. You can choose to send it back to planning if you feel that the conditions are such that the Planning Commission, the council, council wants to see the Planning Commission's recommendation on them. But no, it's not, there's no requirement that that happen.
I don't have a problem with sending it back to planning.
Mr. President, my suggestion would be you leave it on first reading. Hopefully the administration can get together with Mr. Walter and everybody else to get some more answers, because just by looking at this, we've never seen anything like this before. It's kind of coming to us piecemeal, for lack of better words, and to try to fill in the blanks from where we're at now.
I second that.
I agree with that. I think it's fair for everyone at this point.
And I'm concerned about people in Becker, too.
Yeah.
And Marshview, and in surrounding areas.
We have a first and a second on a motion to put on first reading.
Discussion?
Any discussion? Oh, Mr. Landik?
Yeah, thank you, Council President. I guess the laterals that Councilman Donovan just raised, is that an assessment to the existing lots to get that tea in there now at an expensive cost? Because we didn't talk about who would pay for that. There is no duty that I see for the developer to pay for those, so we have to maybe have the administration reach out to these residents and take their temperature on that kind of a cost, cheaper now than paying later.
I, I, Mr. Landik, I, I agree that some conversation has to take with those people on, on, I, you know, the question of whether or not, you know, this type of expense should or can be attached to current development, I, I'm not going to answer that. I want to evaluate that question before I would, you know, make a statement on it. But certainly, it's a decision that I think the owners on the east side of Becker would want to participate.
Thank you.
Well, we have motion done. Call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Before moving forward, just, you know, we've been, had a couple of meetings now on our, our new, lack of better words, overlay district that we've been working on for a couple of years now, and to, you know, it came up in conjunction with, you know, Village Green. And we're trying to, like, tie the loose ends together with Village Greens, and it seems like we're not even to Village Green. So this is, I think, another reason why we definitely, you know, I'm looking forward to getting the feedback from the administration, Planning Commission, and from even the Charter Review Commission, you know, about what we've been working on. Another prime example.
All right. Ordinance number nineteen dash O dash O two two, first reading. Ordinance number nineteen dash O dash O two three.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Concord Road Equipment Manufacturing, Inc., for the purchase of a dump truck body under the State of Ohio Department of Administrative Services Term Schedule Purchasing Program and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Filippiak.
Thank you, Mr. President, and Mr. Schreiker will take these next two items.
Thank you, Mr. Filippiak. As part of the ongoing fleet management program of the Public Works Department, we would like to purchase a new two and a half ton cabin chassis and also the, the dump body. These are both available through State of Ohio purchasing programs. Body is available from Concord Road Equipment at a cost of seventy-three thousand four hundred eighty-seven dollars twenty-one cents, and the cabin chassis is available through the Ohio Department of Transportation's Cooperative Purchasing Program at a cost of ninety-nine thousand three hundred eighty-three dollars. Thank you.
Any questions?
We'll just suspend.
Second.
Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes. We'll do approve.
Second.
Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Ordinance number nineteen dash O dash O two three has passed. Ordinance number nineteen dash O dash O two four.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Cleveland Freightliner, Inc., for the purchase of a dump truck cab and chassis under the State of Ohio Department of Transportation Cooperative Purchasing Program and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Filippiak.
Mr. Schreiker. Chassis.
It's a chassis. Yeah, I'm sorry, I tried to comment on that previously.
Okay.
But that's also available through a State of Ohio purchasing program, and that was the ninety-nine thousand three hundred eighty-three dollars.
Okay, thank you.
We'll suspend.
Second.
Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
You have to have a chassis for the rest of the truck, yes.
Right.
Second.
Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Ordinance number nineteen dash O dash O two four has passed. Ordinance number nineteen dash O dash O two five.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Duramark, Inc., for pavement lane marking services and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Filippiak.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Schreiker, please.
Thank you. Bids are open on March twenty-ninth for the pavement lane marking services. This annual program provides for restriping of all major and minor routes within the city that currently have striping. One bid was received for this project from Duramark with a base bid of two-hundred-seventy-seven thousand nine-hundred-eighty-eight dollars. Striping will be performed in the summer months and only at nights, which is to minimize inconvenience to the motoring public. The paint and application methods are in accordance with ODOT specifications. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Quick question.
Mr. Kirchner?
Was this paving marking going to include that new stri, new stop light at the Giant Eagle entrance on Center Street, coming out, north, north and south on Center Street?
No, that, that, that would be covered on the city's existing contract.
Okay. As you know, I-
But it will be maintained in the future under the same contract.
As, as you know, I mentioned that, to me, this is sort of critical, that we get that marking, because people aren't stopping at that stop line, because there's nothing there, they don't see the, they see the light, but they think it's, and they're going right through it. So hopefully we get that marking up there. It's a stop marking on Center Street going, I guess.
I'll be, I'll be addressing the status of that pavement project here shortly in my, in my report.
Thank you.
And that will include.
We'll just suspend.
Second. Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
We'll do approve.
Second. Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Ordinance number nineteen dash O dash O two five has passed. Ordinance number nineteen dash O dash O two six.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Southeastern Equipment Company, Inc., for the purchase of a Case Model six-two-one G articulated wheel loader under the State of Ohio Department of Administrative Services Term Schedule Purchasing Program and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Filippiak.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our Public Works Department is not a bit of a spending screen.
This is pretty much it for the year. The 2019 budget contained funding for the purchase of a front-end loader, also the art, called the articulated wheel loader. This piece of equipment is vital to our overall operations and is used in a variety of construction, maintenance activities, and perhaps most importantly, it's what we use to load salt into our dump trucks. The front-end loader that to be replaced is approximately twenty years old and has become a maintenance challenge, and it's difficult to find spare parts. It's my recommendation that we purchase a Case Model six-two-one G articulated wheel loader from Southeastern Equipment for a hundred and forty-nine thousand nine-hundred-sixty-three dollars and sixty-nine cents. Thank you.
Council?
We'll just suspend.
Second.
Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
We'll do approve.
Second. Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Ordinance number nineteen dash O dash O two six has passed. Ordinance number nineteen dash O dash O two seven.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with American Fireworks to provide fireworks displays on or about July fourth, 2019, and during the 2019 City Fest events and declaring an emergency.
And Mr. Filippiak, now we get the other end of the table?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President.
Much cheaper than Mr. Schreiker. Two bid proposals were received for the fireworks, fireworks show on July fourth and City Fest. Based upon a review, American Fireworks submitted the best proposal for both shows based on the number of shells and on the size of the shells. The proposals also included the ten million dollars in liability insurance. It is therefore recommended that a contract be awarded to American Fireworks in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars for the July fourth show and three thousand five hundred for City Fest. Thank you.
We'll just suspend.
Second. Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
We'll do approve.
Second. Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Ordinance number nineteen dash O dash O two seven has passed. Resolution number nineteen dash R dash one oh four.
Boy, this sucks. Road salt now.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to participate in the Ohio Department of Transportation Road Salt Contract awarded in 2019 for the purchase of road salt and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Filippiak.
Something we're hoping to forget about these days. Mr. Schreiker, please.
The Ohio Revised Code allows political subdivisions to participate in contracts of the Ohio Department of Transportation for the purchase of a wide range of materials and equipment, or in this case, rock salt. The attached resolution and participation agreement allows the city manager to purchase eight thousand tons of rock salt for the winter nineteen-twenty. Thank you.
We'll just suspend.
Second. Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
We'll do approve.
Second. Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Resolution number nineteen dash R dash one oh four has passed. Second reading, none. Third reading, we have none. Favorite fire of the night, managers' report.
Thank you, Council. Mentor seniors are invited to a senior forum on Wednesday, April seventeenth, from twelve to one P.M. at the Mentor Senior Center. Representatives from the Lake County Council on Aging, Lake County General Health District, Lake County Jobs and Family Services, Lake Tran Lifeline, the Social Security Administration, and Western Reserve Community Development will provide presentations on senior-centric topics followed by a question-and-answer session. The event is free of charge and open to the public. Space is still available for Mentor's Hometown Heroes Banner Program honoring Mentor veterans. Banners will be on display from Memorial Day through Veterans Day. Please visit citymentor.com and find the link under the quick link section to learn more about how to acquire one. Residents from the Public Works Department, residents can recycle all manner of electronic items on April twenty-seventh from nine A.M. to one P.M. at the Lake County Fairgrounds. The full list of recyclable items can be found on the homepage for the Lake County Solid Waste Management District. With warmer weather, temperatures approaching, the city would like to remind residents that opening, open burning to dispose of grass, leaves, brush, and other yard waste is prohibited, and that yard waste services are available through the city's contract through Waste Management. The yard waste program has already begun, begins in the first week of April and runs through the second full week of December. Collection at this time of the year is limited to twelve units per week from April through the third week of October, and then increases to twenty-five units. I mention this because we've had a number of complaints recently, and Chief, would you mind just addressing this briefly on the open burning?
Sure. With the warmer weather, on this past weekend, we had nine complaints for open burning, and, and those complaints were related to yard waste.
Thanks, Chief.
Sure.
Late, late, later this week, Carvo Company will be, will close the southbound curb lane of Center Street at Tyler Boulevard to place new sidewalk and curb on the northwest corner of the intersection. It's anticipated that all sidewalk work can be, all sidewalk work can be completed in a single day at this location. Nighttime paving operations are anticipated to begin on Center Street later this month or early next month, as temperatures permit. So further updates will be provided to Council for clarification on that. So that's at the top of our list, and while we're getting started, we're already under contract for our own local neighborhood paving program. Our priority is going to be on that Center Street corridor to get moving on that, to provide the access and the safety issues that you brought up, Mr. Kirchner. So immediately after the paving, again, temperature permitting, those pavement markings, the permanent pavement markings will go down as well. Just a reminder that the Spring Brook Gardens Park dedication will be held on Tuesday, April twenty-third, from five to six P.M. That is open to the public. On May fourth, this Mentor Cemetery cleanup and decoration removal will begin, so we encourage residents, if they have anything out there that they want to save for the following year, to pick that up before May fourth. On Wednesday, May fifteenth, the Boy Scouts will be placing flags on all veteran gravestones at our cemetery, and on May eighteenth, the Marine Corps will be, will be doing some plantings at the cemetery as well. And then finally, well, actually, I do have one piece of business before I talk about new businesses. Council will find this encouraging. I did receive direct information through one of the governor's, the governor's Northeast Ohio representative with respect to anticipated new revenues as a result of the increase in the gas tax. So generally speaking, we receive about, right now, about one-point-eight, one-point-nine million dollars a year in revenues that go toward our road program. We, generally speaking, supplement that by over a million dollars out of our general fund and have been doing so for eight or nine years now. I'm happy to report to you that our anticipated increase will be right around one-point-one, one-point-two million as a part of that increase. So that will actually provide some relief to our general fund and allow us to continue to do the robust repave-ment programs that we've been accustomed to over the last ten years or so in the neighborhood. So, so that's very good news. You know, we're usually reporting to you that the state is configuring some manner in which to take funds away from the local jurisdictions, but this, this goes in the other direction, so that's welcome news. And also, other welcome news, I'd like to, I'm happy to report to you some new businesses in, in our city. Heisley Point Nutrition LLC is doing business at sixty-nine eighty-six Heisley Road. Tiffany Rose Antiques has opened at eighty-six nineteen Mentor Avenue. That's the old Mentor cigar shop space. Lisa Marie Designs is now doing business at seventy-three twenty-seven Center Street, and we are pleased to cut the ribbon for the Ohio Center for Oral Facial and Implant Surgery at seventy-two oh seven Hopkins at their beautiful new building. So we welcome